It is for precision.
It is for energy. And it's the ability to keep up the rhythm we have the latest.
Every light, two steps.
It is for precision.
It is for energy. And it's the ability to keep up the rhythm we have the latest.
Every light, two steps.
When was the last time you heard it like this?
Like what?
Are you ready?
Yeah!
I thought I'd ask you all a question. Are you ready?
Right, right!
Are you ready for the Wilson Pearl? We're not the one pack. We are the latest. We're making a comeback. And now we're getting crazy. We are motivated. Dedicated. And sophisticated. We are the pearls!
It's often been noted that Black History Month is the shortest month of the year. But what we're seeing tonight is excellence. And the excellence that we see tonight extends throughout the year and throughout the years. These are the children who will be the leaders of our future. And it isn't going to matter the color of their skin. What is going to matter is this excellence that you see tonight, and it is superior. And so, I would like, without further ado, to introduce the coordinators of the Frederick Douglass Orators: Dr. Juanita Pitts, Ms. Stella Wiley, and our own Mr. William Lewis, if you would come forth. You may know... Mr. Lewis has been hanging around here a long time. In fact, his children went to school with my children. And he's one of our wonderful principals emeritus who has contributed to this excellence over many, many years.
Thank you. The other coordinator, Ms. Stella Wiley, she's been around as long as I have because we got our 25th year presentation together. And she's one of the coordinators as well. And she is one who took kids to Washington DC. At this time, I'd like to say to Board President Shirley Thompson, the other Commissioner Superintendent Rivera, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We take pride in bringing to you tonight student representatives from a variety of schools who were participants in the Frederick Douglass Oratorical Contest. These students represented Rochester in a national oratorical contest in Washington DC last month. That is those who were able to get there and were not snowed out. That happened to several of us. We're proud of their contributions and hard work along with the quality and quantity of time they put in so they may stand at the pinnacle of orators of young children. Not only did they represent themselves well, but their families, churches, schools, city Rochester, and the state of New York as well. For that, we thank them. Frederick Douglass, the greatest orator of all times, his speeches are replicated by students, and that tradition should never die. It is with the minds of these youngsters and the dream of Dr. Juanita Pitts that will not allow his hard work to not perish from our memories. It is with their hard work that the great accomplishments of Frederick Douglass will live forever. And at this time, I would now present to you the orators who were winners. They were all winners in the Rochester region. And they were selected to go to Washington to represent this area in the category they were in, dependent bond, which grade they were in. And I'm going to start, not the way that it's listed on the sheet, but because some students are leaving early. I'm going to start with the high school children first. And we always say the better ones, the last, so that would be the second grader. Antoine Alexander, who's at the School of the Arts. He's a 12th grader. Antoine, is he present?
Yes.
Fellow citizens, pardon me. Allow me to ask, why am I called upon to speak here today? What have I or those I represent to do with your national independence? Are the great principles of political freedom and of natural justice embodied in that Declaration of Independence extended to us? And am I therefore called upon to bring our humble offering to the national author? And to confess the benefits and express devout gratitude for the blessings resulting from your independence to us? Would to God, both for your sakes and ours, that an affirmative answer can be truthfully turned to these questions? Then would my task be light and my burden easy and delightful? But who is there so cold that a nation's sympathy cannot warm him? Who so abdurate and dead to the claims of gratitude that would not thankfully acknowledge such priceless benefits? Who so stolid and selfish that would not give his voice to swell the hallelujahs of a nation's jubilee? When the chains of servitude have been torn from his limbs? I am not that man. In a case like that, the dumb might eloquently speak and the lame man leap as an arts. But such is not the state of the case. I say it with the sad sense of the disparity between us. I am not included within the pale of glorious anniversary. Your high independence only reveals the immeasurable distance between us. The blessings in which you, this day rejoice, are not enjoyed in common. The rich inheritance of justice, liberty, prosperity, and independence bequeathed by your fathers is shared by you, not by me. The sunlight that has brought light and healing to you has brought stripes and death to me. This 4th of July is yours, not mine. You may rejoice. I must mourn. To drag a man in fetters into the grand illuminated temple of liberty and to call upon him to join you in joyous anthems or inhuman mockery and sacrilegious irony? Do you mean, citizens, to mock me by asking me to speak today? What? Am I to argue that it is wrong to make men's brutes? To rob them of their liberty? To work them without wages? To keep them ignorant of their relations to their fellow men? To beat them with sticks? To flay their flesh with the lash? To load their limbs with iron? To hunt them with dogs? To sell them at auction? To starve them into obedience and submission to their masters? Must I argue that a system thus marked with blood and stained with pollution is wrong? No. I will not. I have better employment for my time and strength than such arguments would imply. At a time like this, scorching irony not convincing argument is needed. Oh. Had I the ability and could reach the nation's air today, I would pour out a fiery stream of biting ridicule, blasting reproach, withering sarcasm, and stern rebuke. For it is not light that is needed, but fire. It is not the gentle shower, but thunder. We need the storm, the whirlwind, and the earthquake. The feeling of the nation must be quickened. The conscience of the nation must be roused. The propriety of the nation must be startled. And the hypocrisy of the nation must be exposed. And its crimes against God and man must be proclaimed and denounced. What to the American slave is your 4th of July? I answer. A day that reveals to him more than all other days in the year, the gross injustice and cruelty to which he is the constant victim. To him, your celebration is a sham. Your boasted liberty and unholy license. Your national greatness swelling vanity. Your sounds of rejoicing are empty and heartless. Your denunciation of tyrants, brash fronted impudence. Your shouts of liberty and equality, hollow mockery. Your prayers and hymns, your sermons and thanksgivings, with all your religious parade and solemnity are to him mere bombast, fraud, deception, and piety and hypocrisy. A thin veil to curb above crimes which would disgrace a nation of savages. There is not a nation on the earth guilty of practices more shocking and bloody than are the people of the United States at this very hour. Go where you may. Search where you will. Roam through all the monarchies and the despotisms of the old world. Travel through South America. Search out every abuse, and when you have found the last, you will say with me that, for revolting barbarity and shameless hypocrisy, America reigns without a rival. Thank you.
The next person will be a person who I see every Sunday at church, Jelisa Woods.
Mister and Misses Director, Honorable Judges, Ladies and Gentlemen, I have chosen for my subject "What We Ask," written in the summer of 1853 by the very own Frederick Douglass. We ask that, in our native lands, we shall not be treated as strangers or worse than strangers. We ask that, being friends of America, we shall not be treated as enemies of America. We ask that, speaking the same language and being of the same religion, worshiping the same God, owing our redemptions to the same Savior, and learning our duties from the same Bible, we shall not be treated as barbarians. We ask that, having the same physical, moral, mental, and spiritual wants, common to the other members of the human family, we shall also have the same wants which are granted and secured to supply those wants. We ask that the doors of the schoolhouse, the workshop, the college, the church shall be thrown open as freely as to our children as to the children of the other members of the community. We ask that the American government shall be so administered as that beneath the broadsheet of the Constitution, the colored American seaman may be secured in his life, liberty, and property in every state in the Union. We ask that justice knows no rich, no poor, no black, nor white, but like the government of God, renders alike to every man, reward or punishment shall be according to his work that the black and white man may stand upon an equal footing before the laws of the land. We ask that, since the right of the child by jury is a safeguard to liberty against the encroachments of power, only as it is by impartial men drawn indiscriminately from the country. Colored men shall not in every instance be tried by the white persons, by either custom or an actman included from this jury box. We ask that, inasmuch as we are in common with the other American citizens, supporters of the state, subjects to its law, interested in its welfare, liable to be called upon to defend in time of war, contributors to its wealth in time of peace, the complete and unrestricted right of suffrage, which is insensible even to the dignity of the white man, be extended to the free colored man also. Whereas the colored people of the United States have too long been retarded and dependent in the development and improvement of their natural falkities, even to become dangerous rivals to the white men in the honorable pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness. And whereas the proud Anglo-Saxon can need no arbitrary protection from open and equal competition with the varieties of the human family, and where laws have been enacted limiting the aspiration of colored men against white men and plainly discreditable to the white men, and for these and other reasons such laws ought to be appealed. We especially urge that all laws and usage which preclude the enrollment of colored men in the militia prohibit their bearing arms in the Navy. Disallow the rising to their grievances and to their metes are unconstitutional. The constitutional and no color are anti-democratic. Since the democracy respects men as equal are unmagnumus. Since such laws are made by the many against the few and the strong against the weak. We ask that the futureship slave law of 1850, the legislative monster by modern times, by whose atrocious provision the writ of habeas court passed, the right of the child by jury has been virtually abolished, shall be appealed. We ask that the slave law of 1793 be so construed as to apply only to our predecessors and others really owing service or labors not to really owing service or labors not to slaves who can own nothing. Finally, we ask that slavery in the United States shall be immediately, unconditionally, and forever abolished. To accomplish these just and reasonable aims, we solemnly pledge ourselves to God, to each other, to the country, to the world, to use all these and every means with the precepts of Christianity. We shall speak, write, publish, organize, and combine to accomplish them. We shall appeal to the church, to the government, to gain them. We shall vote and expend our money to gain them. We shall send eloquent men of our own condition to plead our cause before the people. We shall invite the corporation of good men throughout this country, and above all, we shall look to God, the Father, the Creator of all men, for the wisdom to direct us, strengthen, and support us in His holy cause. To which we this day solemnly pledge ourselves. The Claim of the Coming Cause, addressed to the Color Convention, wrote to New York in July 1853, like I said, it was written by Frederick Douglass. Thank you.
I would like at this time for Antoine Alexander, if he's still here, I would like his parents to stand. Say that. Okay. Jalisa Woods, with your parents and family, stand please. Darren Carter, Victor Central School District, 6th grader.
Ladies and gentlemen, the title of my speech is, "We Must Become Independent." In the northern states, we are not slaves to individuals, not personal slaves, yet in many respects, we are the slaves of the community. We are, however, far enough removed from the actual condition of the slave to make us largely responsible for their continued enslavement or their speedy deliverance from chains. It is more than a mere figure of speech to say that we are, as a people, chained together. We are one people, one in general complexion, one in popular estimation. As one rises, all must rise, and as one falls, all must fall. Having now our feet on the rock of freedom, we must drag our brethren from the slimy depths of slavery, ignorance, and ruin. Every one of us should be ashamed to consider himself free while his brother is a slave. The wrongs of our brethren should be our constant theme. There should be no time too precious, no calling too holy, no place too sacred to make room for this cause. We should not only feel it to be the cause of humanity, but the cause of Christianity and fit work for men and angels. We ask you to devote yourselves to this cause as one of the first and most successful means of self-improvement. In the careful study of it, you will learn your own rights and comprehend your own responsibilities and scan through the vista of coming time, your high and God-appointed destiny. Many of the brightest and best of our number have become such by their devotion to this cause and the society of white abolitionists. Attend anti-slavery meetings. Show that you are interested in the subject, that you hate slavery and love those who are laboring for its overthrow. It will be a long time before we gain all our rights, and although it may seem to conflict with our views of human brotherhood, we would be compelled to have institutions of a complexional character in order to attain this very idea of human brotherhood. We would, however, advise our brethren to occupy memberships and stations among white persons and in white institutions just so fast our rights are secured to us. Never refuse to act with a white society or institution because it is white, or a black one because it is black, but act with all men without distinction of color. By so acting, we shall find many opportunities for removing prejudices and establishing the rights of all men. We say, avail yourselves of white institutions, not because they are white, but because they afford a more convenient means of improvement. Thank you.
A few years ago, when I was principal at 57th School, I sent out a notice and I went around and talked to the kids in each classroom, and I explained to them who Frederick Douglass was and about the Frederick Douglass Oratorical Contest. And I asked those who would like to participate to come to the office, and I had about, so many came to the office, I took them to the gym. And they all had their speeches and they went over and over, and we did that for about a week, but there are some that really stood out. And every child that really followed through won in the first prize here, or first or second place in Washington DC. Ridell Freeman is no exception. He keeps repeating that. Ridell Freeman.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have chosen for my subject, Prejudice in the Church, Frederick Douglass' speech given in 1841. Through was a great revival of religions not too long ago. Many were converted and received, as they said, into the kingdom of heaven. But it seems the kingdom of heaven is like a net. At least so, it was according to the practice of these pious Christians. But when the net was drawn ashore, they had to sit down and call out the fish. Well, it happened out that some of these fish had rather black scales, so they were sorted out and packed by themselves. There was one young lady who fell into a trench, and when she awoke, she declared that she had been to heaven. Her friends were all anxious to know what and whom she had seen there, so she told the whole story. There was one old lady who curiosity went beyond that of all the others, and she inquired of the girl that had the vision if she saw any black folks in heaven. After some hesitation, the reply was, "Oh, I didn't go into the kitchen. Thus you see my hairs. This presence goes even to the church of God. And there are those that care so far, it is disagreeable to them, even to think of going to heaven if colored people are going there too. And whence comes it? The grand cause of slavery. There are those that less prominent. One of them is the way in which children in this prior country are instructed to regard the black." "Yes," exclaimed the old gentleman, "if they behave wrong, they are been told, let me come catch you." Yet people in general say they like colored men as well as any other, but in their proper place. They assign us that place. They don't let us do it for ourselves. They don't care that we have a head to think, a heart to feel, and a soul to expire. They don't treat us as men, but as dogs. They cry stupid and expect us to run and do the bidding. That's the way we are like. They degrade us and ask why we're degraded. They shut our mouths and ask why we don't speak. They close their colleges and seminaries and ask why we don't know more. Southern preachers say to the poor slaves, "If you want to be happy in time, you must be obedient to your masters. God made one portion of men to do the working and the others to do the thinking." Oh, how good God is. I used to attend the Methodist church where my master was the class leader. He would talk most demoniously about the dear Redeemer, who was sent to preach deliverance to the captives and said, "Our liberty done that our bruise." He could pray at morning, pray at noon, and pray at night. Yet he could lash at my poor cousin with his two thumbs and inflict many strikes and blows. All the time quoting scripture of his authority and appealing to the practice of the Holy Bible, which says, "He who knoweth his master's will and doeth it not, shall be beaten with many stripes." Such was the amount of this good Methodist party. Thank you.
I will ask Ridell Freeman Sr., your junior tonight because your son is at the middle stage, and his family to stand. Ridell is a teacher at Jefferson High School. Oh, that's right. Well, Ridell was a teacher at Jefferson High School. Yep, he's an administrator there now. Maya Rochan, from Nazareth Hall, 2nd grader.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have chosen for my subject, Our Work Is Not Finished. This speech was given by Frederick Douglass on December 28th, 1862, at AME Zion Church. We stand today in the presence of a glorious prospect. This Sunday is, in all likelihood, the last which will witness the existence of legal slavery in all the slaveholding states of America. It is difficult for us who have toiled so long and hard to believe that this event is even now at the door. This is a time of joy and thanksgiving. Nevertheless, this is no time for the friends of freedom to fold their hands and consider their work at an end. Slavery has existed in this country too long and has stamped its character too deeply to be blotted out in a day, a year, or even in a generation. The slave will yet remain in some sense a slave, long after the chains are taken from his limbs, and the master will remain much of the pride, conscious superiority, love of power acquired by his former relation of master. Time, necessity, education will be required to bring all classes in harmonious and natural relations. Law and the sword can and will in the end abolish slavery, but law and the sword cannot abolish the slaveholding sentiment that has kept the slave system alive in this country for two centuries. Hence, we say that the friends of freedom, the men and women of the land who regard slavery as a crime and slave as a man, will still be needed even after slavery is abolished. Thank you.
And now I'd like to present to you a 1st grader. Her name is Jacai Young. Tajie Young, I'm sorry. Tajie Young. Tajie is a 1st grader, and I found out that she loves poetry from her brother, Trajan. When I asked her if what Trajan told me was true, she replied yes, and with lots of enthusiasm. She's going to recite two poems written by Langston Hughes. She's going to recite Dreams and then a poem entitled, "My People."
"My People," by Langston Hughes. "The night is beautiful, so the faces of my people. The stars are beautiful, so are the eyes of my people. The sun, beautiful also is the sun, beautiful also are the souls of my people."
"Dreams," by Langston Hughes. "Hold fast to dreams, for if dreams die, life is a broken-winged bird that cannot fly. Hold fast to dreams, for if dreams go, life is a barren field, froze with snow." "Dreams," by Langston Hughes.
At this time, I'm going to see if Jacai is ready to come back with a 5th grader, Jalisa Daley Griffin. Jalisa will go solo, and she will also recite a poem by Langston Hughes.
Jalisa, are you going to sing?
"I Too," by Langston Hughes. "I too sing America. I am the darker brother. They send me to the kitchen when company comes, but I laugh and eat well and grow strong. Tomorrow, I'll sit at the table when company comes, and nobody will dare say to me, 'Eat in the kitchen.'" Then, besides, they'll see how beautiful I am and be ashamed. "I too am America."
Anybody know this?
Well, I want to thank all of you for being here and helping us to share in our Black History Month, and especially in honoring us and showing up for the performances and for our special awards to our gate openers. Again, I want to thank you for being here, but I want to remind you that Black History, we should be learning about Black History every chance we get. We have, and I meant to bring them tonight just so I can give you some samples, but there are plenty of games out there now that will teach you about Black History. There's cards out there now that will teach you about Black History where you can make it fun for the whole family, the children, and the whole family. Try to get involved in some of those things because you're going to realize that there is a lot of things, such as inventions, that you never even realized that were invented by black folks and nobody even knew, including some black folks. So, that's what you should be doing, is trying to educate yourself. You should be trying to educate your family and the rest of your children. At any time that you're interested in seeing some of those games and some of those cards and trying to find out where you can get them from, you can always contact me here, and I'll be more than happy to give you the information. Again, I want you to give yourself a hand for a great job and for being here. And before we close out, can I turn this over to our president so we can start our wonderful meeting tonight? I'd like to have all our board members stand up so that everyone can see them. Commissioner Willa Powell, Commissioner David Perez, Commissioner Malik Evans, Commissioner Rob Brown is here, Commissioner Jim Bowers is here, and our president, Commissioner Shirley Thompson, and I am Commissioner Darrell Porter. Again, thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Porter, for the effort you and our board staff have put into this program. We appreciate it. You do it on a yearly basis, and you exceed yourself every year. Thank you very much. And specifically, we want to thank Rhonda Kirkland. She's the secretary in the superintendent's office who designed the program. Debbie Harloff is our director of fine arts. Joanne Feen, the board secretary. And most especially, thank you to our presenters. And most especially, thank you to our presenters. And we have in our midst who'll be joining us on the dais, Jeremy Rogers, if you'll stand for a moment and be acknowledged, our student representative on the board.